Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, December 4th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I am the Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, David Tietro. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. The Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair. We have Bill Number 2225. Resolution transferring the amount of $150,000 from the Office of Management and Budgets, Operating Budget, to the Workforce Development Fund, Budget Year 2019. Bill Number 2263. Resolution making appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public business of the city of Pittsburgh and for meeting the debt charges thereof for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020. Bill Number 2264. Resolution adopting and approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program. Bill Number 2265. Resolution fixing the number of officers and employees of the city of Pittsburgh for the 2020 fiscal year and the rate of compensation thereof and setting maximum levels for designated Bill Number 2281. Resolution authorizing the fee schedule for 2020 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code. Bill Number 2331. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $16,000 in favor of Robert Aldred and his attorney, Todd J. Hollis, in full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 2333. Resolution providing for the conveyance by the city of Pittsburgh of certain property having been placed for sale to adjoining property owners in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Items A through C. Item A, 846 Phineas. Item B, 1815 and 1817 Lowry. And Item C, 113 Elmont. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have Bill Number 2336. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration to receive the amount of $182,803. Public Works Committee, Mrs. Kelsmith is the Chair. We have Bill Number 2002. Resolution vacating a portion of Gallatin Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District of the city of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 2291. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV, Public Places and Property, Article I, Chapters 411, 412, 415, 416, and 419. Title IV, Public Places and Property, Article II, Chapter 427, and Title V, Traffic, Article VII, Chapter 548, to clarify the jurisdiction of the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and to update language relative to the Department's maintenance of the use of right-of-way, especially involving permits and fees. Bill Number 2337. Resolution granting unto Seabrook Partners, LP, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own costs and expense an ADA entrance ramp at 419 South Craig Street, 5th Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 2338. Resolution amending and supplementing Resolution 42 of 2015 entitled, "Resolution Providing for Contract or Use of Existing Contracts and/or Agreements," and providing for the design, repair, maintenance, improvements, emergencies, and the purchase of materials and supplies in connection with the design and construction of the South Negley Avenue Bridge, including construction management services, providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and providing for the payment not to exceed $750,000 to account for increased project costs higher than originally anticipated, but not to exceed $1,212,000. Human Resources Committee, Mrs. Harris is the Chair. We have Bill Number 2284. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to enter into an agreement with Connecture Care for services relating to the administration of the city of Pittsburgh's flexible spending account and for a sum not to exceed $23,100 over three years and for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill Number 2285. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an agreement with International Trauma Life Support Pennsylvania Chapter for Trauma Life Support Training Services for the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services at a cost not to exceed $6,750 and providing for the payment of the costs thereof. Bill Number 2286. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into a cooperation agreement with Partner for Work for the shared operation and administration of the Workforce Development Fund for a period of two years from the opening of the fund in an amount not to exceed $250,000. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have Bill Number 2334. Resolution requesting authorization for the Mayor and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to enter into an agreement with Ath Power Consulting Corporation to provide customer service and soft skills training to the department's staff. This agreement is chargeable and payable from the following an account in an amount not to exceed $35,750 for a one-year contract. Bill Number 2335. Resolution providing for an agreement and contract with Fireman Creative LLC to assist the city to plan and conduct a design workshop and produce a visually compelling suite of digital and print materials to effectively communicate our neighborhood plan program and guide to the public and a variety of users and provide for the payment cost not to exceed $24,950. Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, Mrs. Strausberger is the Chair. We have Bill Number 2339. Resolution amending and supplementing Resolution 539 of 2016 entitled, "Authorizing the Mayor, City Clerk, and/or the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or agreement with Granicus Inc. for software upgrades, server hosting services, and annual maintenance of Legistar Agenda Management and Video Streaming in order to extend the contract an additional six months." That concludes the reading of legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you for tuning in. Have a wonderful day.
Welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meetings on Wednesday, December 4th, 2019. Our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public who are addressed to the City Council, please come forth. Start off with your name and neighborhood. You'll be giving three minutes. The green light means the beginning of three minutes. Yellow light means one minute to summarize. Red light means your time has expired. Please relinquish the podium. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official actions, or deliberation, which or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted and order will be maintained at all times. First speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Les Ludwig and I'm back with something that you've seen before. You had a copy of this probably a year, over a year ago. It's the number of people up until 2009 that weren't paying anything in federal tax, but the city, of course, wants to get its share from the federal government. Geez, that's sort of tough. So what we look at today with the Trump problem is that Trump represents the people who are not making it. Let's look at it the way I was, the way I heard it. The rich get rich and the poor get poorer. So now we have Mr. Trump with a lot of promises and nonsense and problems, and then he adds $1,000 more deduction, which means that instead of $37.1 trillion that's not collected from this group, it's now higher. Now how do we make, how do we make the change so that the problem goes away? So that the poor get richer? So that the poor feel that they're properly represented by their representatives in this level or every level of government? And it comes down to, what are you going to do about this issue? You stop giving, giving tax relief as a way to get votes? And what you do is you take $37.1 trillion and put it into what? Education, buildings, schools, teachers, money that's spent and that will pay you more, major dividends, so that the poor will get richer because they'll get out of school and hopefully they'll be properly prepared for employment, which they're not. And I had an example the other day of going to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and the gal could run a computer beautifully and I was looking for non-slip rugs for a bathroom because I fell and I got hurt. And I ended up talking to the young lady and she couldn't translate inches into feet. She had no understanding of basic mathematics, so therefore our educational system is failing and we have to do something about it. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
I have quite a few things. So number one, my name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I wanted to say, we have excellent reporters. Arielle, I'm not pronouncing it right, and Sierra. This is WESA. That's our radio station. That's 90.5 FM. The reason why I say that, they tell us about what's happening in the city. Nine o'clock in the morning, I heard about the meeting over at the school board. I was able to register. You understand? I was able to go to the school board and tell the superintendent, and I'll tell you what I told him. He should have never been hired. I questioned him and asked him, "You took our money and you went to Cuba. Why didn't you go to Africa, Hades, Jamaica? You went to Cuba." I'm 73 years old. I remember when Castro ran up in the mountains. See, some of yous weren't even born. See, I remember about Castro. I'm asking this black man, "Why would you go to Cuba? Understand, we're up here in the north." I visited in Florida for a whole month. They think differently from us. They really do. I'm telling you, they got a different mindset. The people from down south, even in Atlanta, Georgia, that's where my daughter lives, the women think much differently and the men. The reason why I say that, my granddaughter was doing a report up at the school. They had milk, they had juice, but no water. When I asked, when she asks the lady, "Why no water?", she can't tell. So I tell him, and he says, "No milk, no juice." I said, "They got juice. They got milk with no water." If you got a black school where a lot of black people, understand, there's something with our system, lactose intolerance. We can't deal with the milk. So if you're a black man coming from down south, you should have known they should have had water. Now, my granddaughter tells me, one says she didn't see any water, but the other one, you got to pay for it. If we could spend money going to Cuba, then our children should have free water. Listen, let me tell you something. He does not need to be here in the state. I said this before, needs to take over our school system, the state. You hear me, parents? We got four assistant superintendents, $100,000 apiece, $400,000, you understand? And we can't get books. We can't get transportation. We can't get what we need for our children, but you got four people, $1,000. Shut up. You just got to stop talking. See, that makes me mad. And then you say I'm wrong. Only got three minutes. You just want to cut it down, which he has. You want to cut it down from three minutes. You don't even want to listen to us. And we're the ones that's paying your salary. I still can't get over Ms. Gross, $68,000 a year. I came before and told you, we only need five. We only need nine. We just need to have tiebreaker, but you just get $68,000 a year and they can't come twice a week. Now that's awful.
Thank you for that pleasantry. Any other speakers today? Seeing no other speakers, we will go to the roll call. We ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cargill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Yeah.
Mrs. Harris.
Yeah.
President Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Seven members present.
All right. Thank you very much. We were going to go to, out of order, we're going to go to page five in your agenda, Public Safety Services. Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 2336. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration to receive the amount of $182,803.
Need a motion, Mr. Lavelle.
Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Lavelle.
This is simply to increase their ability to do roadside checks, seatbelt compliance, drunk driving, etc.
Right. All right. Miss Conversation, Ms. Harris.
Do you, I stopped, okay.
Hear the conversation. Seeing no conversation, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Aye, have it. Thank you very much. Thank you for your attendance. That takes us to the front of the agenda, which Finance Law Committee, which I am the Chair. We have supplemental paper.
Bill 2354. Resolution amending Resolution 211, authorizing the Mayor through the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to execute relevant agreement with neighborhood allies to implement the creation of financial empowerment centers within the city and further providing for agreements and expenditures not to exceed $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation, Ms. Smith?
So I thought these were the centers that we allocated some money towards in their, you know, north, south, east, west, that Henry was working on in the mayor's office. And I just was wondering if we could get some update on the success of those programs. I know we had to move the one in the west.
You want to hold the bill for that or you want to?
No, no, no.
Any other conversation about the bill? If not, the clerk will get in touch with the mayor's office and get an update. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2225. Resolution transferring the amount of $150,000 from the Office of Management and Budgets, Operating Budget, to the Workforce Development Fund, Budget Year 2019.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Mr. O'Connor.
I'm so sorry. This is, this bill, 225, as well, this is from the administration, as well as 2286, on page six, are requested to be held for one more week.
Is there such a motion?
Motion to hold.
You have to read the other bill.
Read the other bill, please, 2286.
Bill 2286. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into a corporation agreement with Partner for Work for the shared operation and administration of the Workforce Development Fund for a period of two years from the opening of the fund in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for the payment of cost thereof.
All right, we have two motions, I mean, two bills now read on the table. What's your pleasure?
Motion to hold both bills one week.
I need a second. Any conversation or conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay.
Thank you.
Takes us to, it takes us to the budget bills. There's three of them. If you would please read all three of them.
Bill 2263. Resolution making appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public's business of the city and for meeting the debt charges thereof for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020. Bill Number 2264. Resolution adopting and approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDBG Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program. Bill Number 2265. Resolution fixing the number of officers and employees of the city for the 2020 fiscal year and the rate of compensation thereof and setting maximum levels for designated positions.
The fourth one, yeah, the next one.
Bill Number 2281. Resolution authorizing the fee schedule for 2020 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code.
I need a motion for the four budget bills, Mr. Kraus.
Motion to hold one week.
Need a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2303. Is that, I believe, 81? Was that 81?
Yeah, 81.
Could we get a copy of the, the increased fees?
The fee schedule.
The fee schedule, yeah.
The fee schedule.
Would you say?
It's attached to the legislation.
Okay. I don't know if I have that. Okay. I'm sure somewhere.
We'll get it to you again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Bill 2303. Resolution amending Resolution Number 206, authorizing the Mayor and the city's solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell, Durant, Beatty, Palumbo, and Miller for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total cost from $220,000 to $305,000.
Need a motion.
To approve.
Yeah, second.
Any conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2330. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of $33,000 to Jane D. Simone for arbitration services rendered in connection with Act 111 Interest Arbitration.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Conversation. No conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2331. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of $16,000 in favor of Robert Aldred and his attorney in full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Need a motion.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Need a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2333. Resolution providing for the conveyance by the city of certain property having been placed for sale to adjoining property owners in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Items A through C. 846 Phineas, 1815 through 17 Lowry, 113 Elmont.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Conversation, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, can you hold till I find that one here?
Sure. Take your time. Mr. Cargill, while Ms. Harris is searching.
Aaron, are you here for this?
Yes.
Okay, come on up here.
Morning.
You had a routine.
Morning, Aaron.
Good morning, Aaron Pickett, Finance Department.
Okay, so, yeah, Aaron.
I think these are, okay, I think these were.
This side law program, it's $201. Is that a flat fee for any lot?
Yes, and then we have a rental fee for the length of time, which is a dollar a day.
Oh, is that right? So if somebody is planning to stay there for 10 years and they want to rent it for 10 years, they can do that, so. So you're talking $365 a year versus $200 for, to own it.
Right, they own the property.
I'm a big fan of this. I tell you what, to me, the more, that's creating green space in the, in our neighborhoods like mine, like Beachview, like ours, and to create a yard like that for somebody, I think is beautiful. And, you know, they still pay property tax on it, but, but, yeah, so any identified city-owned property, we can?
Yes, it has to be a vacant structure and 4,000 square feet and adjoining your property.
Joining the property. And if the neighbor adjoining the other side of that property wants it, they can split it?
That would be something they would have to work out after one of them purchased it, maybe.
Got it. Great, great. Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Harris, defer.
Evidently, the page is missing out of here. Can we hold this till my staff comes out?
We can. We'll have, continue the conversation. We won't vote on it till you get the information you need.
Thank you.
Reverend, I'm sorry, I just wanted to finish on one little thing.
I thought you were finished, I'm sorry.
Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. So, so if I identify the city lots that are in Carrick and Beachview and Brookline that are owned by the city, I can, if I wanted to, knock on the neighbor's door and say, "Hey, you know, we have this great program. You want to increase the size of your yard."
Yep.
Right? And therefore, you know, they'll take care of it, more than likely. You know, they can have a garden, they could have a horse in some cases, so. So, okay, so I can actively pursue people. And if they say, "Yes, I'm interested," we call you and we write up a deed and done.
And our department can provide you that information.
Yeah, that's beautiful. Okay, thanks.
Gross.
Thank you. So, I also am a fan of this program and we've seen quite a few in my district over many years, but I have questions from some constituents that there was a side lot that was acquired in the program and remind me, it's, it's required to stay green space. Is it or is it not? So this is, could you just clarify? So the question is, aren't they supposed to stay open space and some people have built on them? And so is that a requirement? And what do we do as a follow-up? So if you could just talk about that.
That, that was prior to us adding covenants in our deeds. We have covenants in our deeds that don't allow construct, new construct on the properties anymore.
So if someone saw construction, it's maybe because the lot was acquired before there was a covenant, and so that lot in their neighborhood may not have been required to stay open? And then what does happen if, let's say tomorrow, you acquire a lot and it does have that covenant, and then two years from now, you do build on it? What happens?
I mean, a case like that, that would possibly be a legal matter if, if, but our current deeds that don't allow you to build.
And so would we take the property?
That would be something legally we could look into.
Yeah, so, you know, that there's a covenant on a deed, I mean, I'm not an attorney. I'm sure there's a real estate attorney out there somewhere who would answer this in a blink of an eye, but what does a covenants on a deed entitle us as the city for recourse? It's kind of an open-ended question that?
It restricts new construct on our, on properties of our side yard program.
So hopefully, if you came in, you wouldn't actually be able to do construction because you would need a city permit. you would need a city permit. And then our databases, as the councilwoman Harris likes to say, the computers would actually talk to each other, and the databases would catch that it was deed restricted, which is not the same as zoned. It could be zoned for construction, and you could have legitimate building plans approved by PLI, but in some place in the bureaucracy, somebody would have to say, no, I'm not going to give you a planning permit or a construction permit because this lot is deed restricted. Now, I know that I've had at least three or four demolitions in my district that should not have happened. If a person went to the desk where you would get a demolition permit for anywhere else in the city and was given a permit, but what should have happened because of zoning, because they're in the bomb center corridor overlay, is those lots, that person at the desk should have said, no, you cannot have a demolition permit for that building because you must have approvals from the planning commission, similar to the eco-innovation districts and the bombs in a corridor, both have those kinds of things. But guess what? I was driving by and the building was half gone, and had been no planning commission hearing. And this happened several times. So this is why I'm eager to hear from the administration that, as again, if councilwoman Harris said that the computers are talking to each other, which is really about software being able to be coordinated, and departments not being siloed, but being able to share information, especially at the property level with the GIS coding. So I just wanted to point that out, even though this table kind of understands and has intentions or even passes ordinances, we still need them to be administrated the way they should be. Right? So, okay, thank you. That's all.
Gross?
Thank you. Just a couple words of caution. In, in the timeframe of an application, it's not boom, 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 bang, application, you have a side yard tomorrow. It can take anywhere from 18 months to several years before all the deed, anything that might be complicating the deed is cleared, which we incur all costs to do that, but it can be time-consuming to do that. And then the $200 initial fee, I think by the time you're done goes to about four something, if I'm not mistaken?
Right.
Right? So your total cost is a little bit higher than that. And the property must be contiguous, so it has to be right side, left side, or directly back. It can't, if it is not contiguous to your property, it doesn't qualify for side yard. And then there was one other one that the councilwoman brought up, oh, about building on the lots. My understanding, and the reason that we restrict deeds from building, is that it would be a very easy way for someone to acquire land at a very inexpensive price for the sole purpose of building on it instead of paying its full value. Correct?
Right.
Okay. I'm a big fan of the program, too. I do have several, and we'll come down and talk to you about, the applications really have languished for quite some time. And I understand how complicated they could be, but there are a few I'd really love to see come to fruition.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Beth?
I'm just going to thank you for this because this is, one of these are in District Two, and it's a popular program everybody mentioned, but I also want to thank you for your work on it. And I think that we're asking a lot of questions now, that maybe we've, a lot of us have been asking all along. But I think one of the things, I've always been more of a fan of the Real Estate Department in doing things in-house because council does have a say. And as you know, there were cases in my district where people were selling, you know, CDCs were selling property to board members, and there was insider trading, all kinds of stuff that wasn't disclosed on federal documents. And we caught all that. And working through, you know, our Real Estate Department, we had some say for the public. And there was also times where, you know, there was a property that was sold that a board member was going to buy, and we were able to stop that, too. But that was because we worked with our Real Estate Department. So I'm a fan of the Real Estate Department. And I think that our, I think this is our last chance to get our land bank up and running in, with the hiring of a new exec, of an executive director. And I think if that doesn't work, then we have to revisit this whole, this whole process. And I think a lot of us are getting frustrated. But I want people to understand it takes so long because, part of it takes so long is because of the federal laws. And it's not state and federal laws. It's not going to be sped up a whole lot by the land bank either. I think it's, from 18 months to 14 months is the difference. And so I don't want people to think that there's some magic wand that's going to be waived, because we can only do so much within our power. But I do want to thank you for your work. I want to thank, I think that if we want this Real Estate Department to do all the things that we want, if we want the Real Estate Department to make sure that they're tracking properties and getting, moving properties more quickly, and making sure if people aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing with the properties, that we actually strengthen our Real Estate Department and give you the help that you need to get those things done. But we can't criticize and at the same time not fund the department adequately. So I just want to say that.
Charlie?
Thank you.
I want to thank you, too, for all you did down there with the small staff that you have. It's, I don't think people understand how difficult the work is and how much you have to know on all kinds of different things. Also, not counting what the council members, you know, want to see before we vote on it. So you've been doing a great job, and so has your staff. And I personally want to thank you, too.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. I'm sure you answered it a few seconds ago. I just want to remind myself. If someone owns a lot that has no structure on it, then they're not eligible for a side lot program, right? If they own, if they own a lot, and like, say you own a lot, if you own a lot, but there's no structure on it?
Right, absolutely.
Huh?
Yeah, it's a structure.
You have to be, it has to be your domicile, right, for the side lot program? All right, that's what I thought. Just double checking it. All right, any other, Mr. Kalkiel, round two.
Two, two other things. When, is it, do people actually get a deed for the property?
Yes, you get a deed to the property.
On a deed, does it say you're restricted to build?
Yes.
Okay, so that really is, you know, simple and clear. If somebody decides a bill, then that's, the city would probably have to take them to court, I guess.
Wouldn't be to get permission.
Of course, would cost us money, but that's, you know, we have that right, and we should win all day long on that, I would think, if it's in the deed. But, yeah, the process, and thank you, Councilman Kraus and Kell Smith, for pointing out the length of it and why the length of it. I was ready to go out with my suitcase tomorrow morning and, you know, start knocking on doors and say, get $200, and this thing is done. But it is a process, and that, it makes it a lot less, you know, interesting for people to buy when it's going to take a year and a half down the road. They might not even be there, you know? So I wish the process somehow could be sped up, whether it's on the state level, whatever level it is. On our level, what would the process take us? If, you know, you didn't have to go through all the other bureaucracy. I mean, you have to process it, right? Is that, is that, that's what you got to do?
Probably, if we're looking at 12 to 18 months, it would probably take us eight.
Eight months?
Maybe a little less.
Yeah. Because, because you're understaffed. Is that why?
No, um, yeah, just, yeah, just our state laws and titles and things like that.
Okay, so, so it's going to take eight months at a minimum, pretty much, even if we sped everything up?
Just get title, just the ownership.
Okay, well, I guess you got to be in it for a long run, then.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Smith.
I just want to say that Senator Fontana has been working with Reverend Burgess on trying to, you know, update that process on the state level and to speed it up a little bit. So I don't know what the status of that is, but I do want to say we do have an ally and a friend, and Senator Fontana trying to do more in terms of real estate in the city.
Correct. Counsel, President Kraus.
Very briefly, the, the timeframe is not to discourage people from buying. We want to encourage people to buy. And it is really to their benefit to purchase in that the cost involved in clearing the title and making sure that it's clean, we absorb. They have no, you know, expense in that at all. But it does take time to clear a title and research it and do everything that needs to be, to be done. But then you receive a free and clear title at no cost to you when it's done, so.
Any other conversation?
Thank you.
Any other conversation? No other conversation? All favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That takes us to the invoices, I believe. There are invoices on the table. Need a second. Any conversation about the invoices? No conversation. Invoices, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That takes us to page five of the Agenda, Public Works Committee. Mrs. Kell Smith is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
You have P cards? No P cards?
There are no P cards on the table. There are no interdepartment transfers on the paper.
Yes, sir.
I'm ahead of you.
Yes, you are.
Public Works Committee, Ms. Kell Smith is the chair.
Bill 2002, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Gatlin Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Councilwoman Gross.
No P cards? What do you want to do? Gatlin Street.
We need a motion.
Oh, gosh. I still don't have any more answers. I apologize.
Do you want to hold it?
Yeah, come, do another three weeks?
Well, we're coming to the end of the...
We'll do the end, so, yeah.
We're doing a week at a time.
We could do two if you want.
Let's do it a week at a time.
All right.
Okay. Motion to hold one week.
Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Um, you know this, I'm just, just for clarity's sake, that even though we will reorganize in January, this could be, if for some reason it takes you longer, we can re-reduce it as new legislation in January. So there, you're not, you're not rushed.
Thank you.
This takes us to another new paper.
Bill 2291, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title IV, Public Places and Property, Article I, Article II, Title V, Traffic, Article VII, Chapter 548, to clarify the jurisdiction of the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and to update language relative to the Department's maintenance of the use of the right-of-way, especially involving permits and fees.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Ms. Smith, any conversation?
I'm good.
No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next new bill, please.
Bill 2337, Resolution Granting Unto C. Puff Partners LP Their Successors and Assign the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense in ADA Entrance Ramp to 419 South Craig Street, 5th Ward, 6th Council District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any conversation?
I don't know who's, is 6th.
Is it Erin? Is it Erin or Daniel?
He's good. You're good.
I'm good.
Okay.
Any conversation?
Nope.
No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill?
I have to amend this one.
No. Next bill, please.
Bill 2338, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 42 of 2015, Providing for a Contract Agreement in Connection with the Design and Construction of the South Nagley Avenue Bridge to Account for Increased Project Costs Higher Than Originally Anticipated, but Not to Exceed $1,212,000.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve?
Need a second. Any conversation?
I like to make a motion to amend.
Motion to amend. There's a written amendment on the table.
The amendment's on the table.
Motion and moved on the table. Any conversation about the amendment?
No.
Ms. Gross, conversation about the amendment?
Thank you, Councilman. Could you explain what we are, is it an increase of $500,000 over the increase of $700,000?
It was an increase. Um, wait, I think it was an increase.
It is. But here's the, and the increase is here. I believe, I'm vibrating this one.
Do you want to come to the table, Director, please?
The increase looks like it is $15,000.
Oh, yes, like $15,000.
It's a $15,000 increase.
That's, the amendment is $15,000, but the original resolution is more than that.
You have the director here, you have the table.
It's, uh, 2338.
How are you?
Good morning, Director. Could you introduce yourself for the public?
I'm Karina Ricks. I'm the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Thank you. And just a quick synopsis, because we did, we already passed this last week. We'll just amend, we introduced it last week, I'm sorry.
Right. So this is just the, the amendment is to correct the amount that went into the first submitted bill.
Can you recap it for me?
Recap.
Recap the original bill with the amendment for me, like, together?
So the original bill was to add 207, I'm sorry, $750,000 to the total project amount. And again, this is a bridge project, so it's a, it's a 5% local contribution, and the balances will be paid by, by state sources. And then the amendment corrected that and added the additional...
So our 5% amount doubled. Because it, you raised it $750,000 to be no more than 1.2 million total?
Uh, correct.
I just feel like, am I not reading this right? Because it's more than 100% change order.
So the total JDE, thank you, the, the, section one summarizes the sources, FHWA, which is the federal aid amount, SHWA, which is the state aid amount. So the bond is what the local money is. So the bond is less than 100,000.
Okay, got it. So while the total project costs...
Right, because we are issuing the contract, so we need to approve, approve the full funding amount. But the vast majority of the funding is coming from non-local sources.
So I can't help also to take the opportunity to ask you to confirm whether or not this is the second bridge height, second bridge that we're raising the height in order to qualify for the matching funds that would allow the double-decker trains on that track. This is the same track that goes through Councilwoman Harris's district that she has the pending litigation from the community opponent groups. So this is why I'm asking you, because I'm just want, this is my understanding, and am I wrong, or?
Um, I would never say you're wrong, Councilmember.
I could be, I could very well be wrong, that's why I'm asking you.
But, no, this is, this bridge, yes, this is the same rail corridor that traverses through Council District 6 and 1, and 7 and 8, and continues on out the city. So it is the same rail corridor. This bridge project is not, this, this is a bridge maintenance project. This bridge, as, as you know well...
No, I thought it was not tall enough for the double-decker trains.
That is correct, as it stands today. But the origin of this, of this project, the same as West Ohio Street, is a bridge maintenance project.
But you are raising the bridge.
The bridge will be raised.
In order to qualify for the matching funds. Am I understanding that correctly?
It, it's not necessarily linked.
I thought that's how we understood it on the North Side.
The, the bridge is a bridge maintenance project.
There's been a lot of work going on with this in a long time, too. It's not just...
Fine, but if I was, if we were, if we allocated 100% right now, the bridge would not have to be raised. Is that also true?
So the PUC approves all activities that occur over the rail lines. So there's a difference between the source of the funding and actual approval to do the work. We would not be approved to, to work over the rail tracks unless we were to meet the PUC standards and requirements, which those standards and requirements include the, the, yeah, providing the required elevation.
So if we were doing a bridge maintenance project that we were paying 100% for?
We would still have to go through the PUC.
We would still have to go to the PUC. That is correct. And you, how do you know the PUC would make us raise it? Until you asked them?
Because they ha, no, because they have codified regulations that articulate. This was litigated with the West Ohio Street Bridge in 2005.
There's, there's more litigation out there, right?
Yeah. And so the PUC would say, no, no permit for you, and we'd be forced to close Nagley.
The, yes, we could remove the bridge, and, and then obviously they would gain the clearance that was needed.
I think this is really important for the people of Pittsburgh to understand, that we would be forced to let a bridge disintegrate.
We would be forced to remove a bridge.
Rather than raise, if we, if we didn't want to raise it.
Yes.
They'd never...
It would just...
Mm-hmm.
So, and that is the exact same rail line. So it's the West Park, one in North Side, and it comes across the Fort Wayne Bridge, right? And it takes a loop and enters District 7 by the Amtrak Station, and it goes in front of Polish Hill, right, or through Polish Hill, really, along the Bus Bay Lines, and then it loops around.
But it has to go under a street, too, and none of that hasn't even come up yet.
Right. So if... That would still be a bridge, wouldn't it?
If we were doing routine...
It's a bridge under, underground.
If we were doing routine maintenance, so painting the bridge, resurfacing the bridge, doing that kind of routine maintenance that doesn't really involve a heavy capital investment, obviously we would not need to raise the bridge simply to resurface it. But because this is a major capital improvement, that ends up going to the PUC, and they need to make the determination of whether or not this constitutes essentially a reconstruction or significant reconstruction. That's what we, you know, literally litigated with West Ohio Street years ago, and the PUC concluded that these major capital investments do require meeting the new current clearance grade, which is 22 feet.
Well, how old is that clearance grade?
Uh, the, well, it's decades old, but we don't rebuild bridges very often, yeah.
But it, so are we also saying that if we had maintained and painted it, well, eventually things just need to be replaced, even no matter how perfect the maintenance?
Yeah. I mean, if we, theoretically, if we had just continued to maintain the bridge in a state of good repair consistently...
It might have lasted longer. It might have lasted longer.
This would be a different conversation, but...
These bridges need to be repaired.
That's not where we're at, yeah.
And not just maintained.
Correct.
Both 28th Street and Nagley.
28th Street, I believe, reaches the clearance, but I would have to confirm that for you, but...
Yeah, I'm not too sure, we had a, had a committee meeting about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just really needed to have that restated, because I am not in favor of raising those bridges.
I understand, and, and...
And my constituents are not in favor of having the double-decker trains go right through their backyards.
And we have litigation out there right now.
Right. All right, I'm still, I'm still so uncomfortable, I'm going to abstain on principle on this one, I understand, and thank you for clarifying, and you, you explained it very clearly.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, and we, the administration obviously has the same concerns about the double-stacking and the increased, uh, bridges. This is a case where we do have a public safety issue, if we do not move forward with maintaining this, um, bridge is a vitally important connection, as, as, as we know well, this is a major transit connection and others, so, yeah.
Nagley.
Yeah.
I'm here, I'm, I'm looking at our, I'm sorry, I'm looking at our calendar. Um, any other conversation? Ms. Dukakio?
So, reading between the lines, is it safe to say, Councilwoman Gross, that this, of course, is mostly federal money?
Federal and state, yes.
And you feel that the federal government, being it's a railroad coming through there, that they intentionally want to raise that bridge in order to bring double-decker cars through?
It's actually our state utility commission.
Yeah, yeah, so...
The same as they want to do on the North Side.
It's like, we'll pay for a new bridge, but we want it raised in order so we can bring more cargo through, is that how you feel?
Not only are they going to bring more cargo through, they're going to be, bring more trains through.
Right, right. Well, I'll abstain along with you until you figure out what you want to do.
I am too.
I'm abstaining with you, too.
Go ahead. Yeah, well, I'm just going to say that there's been a lot of work done on this, that the Councilwoman, whose district this is in, is supportive, because she has been at the table doing a lot of work, um, and she has the same concerns with double-decker trains and all those other things that, that we have.
Around the center.
I, I also have concerns with trains that are extending even longer with less conductors on them, and they're doing those things as well, and so there's a lot happening with the railroad, um, that, that is a concern to the city, not just double-decker train, I mean, it's not just a one-issue thing, so if you want to address it, let's address it fully, and, 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 um, make sure we understand everything that's occurring there. I happen to have a nephew that works for the railroad, so I know a little bit more. So I'll just say that, uh, there's a lot to be concerned about, but there's been a lot of work, and I appreciate the work that's gone into this, um, the mayor's office, uh, state officials, a lot, um...
Right.
Others have all been at the table for this, and so...
Not helping.
Yeah, and so, uh, so I'm going to be supportive today, because I think that, um, there's some, more, more things that are working on, and they're all concerned with double-decker trains, so, I mean, and maybe you know more than I do, but, I mean, I just know that there's been a lot of work occurring and, and that they're supportive, or she is supportive, I don't, I can't say the mayor's office.
Okay, so we're still on discussion on the amendment. Let's finish the amendment and go back, if you're okay, let's go, finish the amendment and go back to discussion on the bill. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, now we are on the...
Same thing.
Abst, three abstentions, all right? Um, so there's one, two, three, four.
Three.
Oh, sorry, four, four, three, Cory's not here. Um, so, no, Cory's not in, in the room, it's four, three. All right, so, we're on the original bill, um, and I saw, the only hand I saw that wants to talk about the original bill is Ms. Gross, right?
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. So I just wanted to point out for the public members that I, my district line, it is, is definitely in, in Councilwoman Strasburger's district, um, but even at the Nagley Bridge, my district line is right down the middle of Center Avenue, if you know where the Giant Eagle is. So she does have the Giant Eagle, but I have the apartment building across the street, and it's, I mean, it's a matter of feet, I'm like 20 feet off of the literal bridge. Um, so, and it's, it's, I represent the, almost parallel to the tracks, the district line goes very, very close there, and let alone that it crosses then over, um, under, basically the bridge on Baum, um, is where it takes the turn and crosses right back into my district, so, and is, again, in my district entirely, from the Fort Wayne Bridge, um, until it crosses over at Baum, so there's a significant amount of track that is entirely in District Seven, and a lot of District Seven residents have, have expressed their concerns to me, so I just want to clarify, because some people may not realize how close District Seven and District Eight line is to the actual tracks themselves.
It affects your people, wasn't it?
It's very close.
Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much.
Stay.
Abstain.
Thank you, Director.
All right, two abstains, all right, so I, three abstain, thank you very much. Now, as we move on, I want to, to, um, tell Council that, um, on your original agenda, there is, um...
Thank you, Director, have a good day.
There's a misprint, there's a, there was the wrong bill on the agenda, so you've gotten a new page six, right? There was a bill that was supposed to be on there that wasn't, and there was a bill that was on there that shouldn't have been, that was passed last week, so that's why you're getting a new page six. All right, so please use the new page six, because the first bill doesn't appear on your old page six, all right? Hopefully that's clear. If we would start then with Bill Number 2019, 2283.
Um, 2284.
83.
The new page is 83.
Page three is 83.
It should be 83 and 84, please walk off 83.
Right, should be 83.
Okay, Bill 2283, yep, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Commission to enter into an agreement with UPMC Work Partners Life Solutions for services relating to the administration of the city's Envoy Assistance Program for a sum not to exceed $150,000 over three years, and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Ms. Harris, need a motion.
Okay, this is on, uh, 83 and 84?
Yes.
This is 83.
We didn't read 84 yet, do you want them to read it together?
Oh, motion to approve 83.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, 284, please.
Bill 2284, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Commission to Enter Into An Agreement with Connect Your Care for Services Relating to the Administration of the City's Flexible Spending Account Program for a sum not to exceed $23,100 over three years, and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Need a motion, Ms. Harris.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation? See, no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, takes us to Bill 2286.
We already did that one, whole one week.
Oh, that's, that's the hell one, that's, okay, cool, thank you, it took us a team working together. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, by the way, I did not mention that our Human Resources Committee is chaired by, um, Darlene Harris, that was my oversight. Um, next, Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the chair, we have a new paper.
Bill 2334, Resolution Requesting Authorization for the Mayor and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection to Enter Into An Agreement with the Power Consulting Corporation to Provide Customer Service Soft Skill Training to the Department Staff. The Agreement is Chargeable and Payable from the Following Accounts in an Amount Not to Exceed $35,750 for a One-Year Contract.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve.
Need a second, any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, next bill, please.
Bill 2335, Resolution Providing for an Agreement and Contracts with Fireman Creative LLC to Assist the City to Plan and Conduct a Design Workshop and Produce a Visually Compelling Suite of Digital and Print Materials to Effectively Communicate Our Neighborhood Plan, Program, and Guide to the Public at a Variety of Users and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $24,950.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Conversation, no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, takes us to the last committee of the day, Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management, Ms. Strasburger is the chair, we have a new paper.
Bill 2339, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution 539 of 2016, which Authorizes the Mayor, the City Clerk, and/or Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Contract with Granicus Inc. for Software Upgrades, Server Hosting Services, and Annual Maintenance of Ledger Star Agenda Management and Video Streaming in Order to Extend the Contract in Additional Six Months.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second, any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.